They put the money they had in what they had.
All right, I get that.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the planning board meeting for the town of East Fishkill for June 12th, 2025. Will everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you. Are we to wait for my?
Yes.
We should. Okay. Upcoming meeting dates are July 17th, Thursday, and August 19th, which I assume goes back to the regular Tuesday meeting. Is that right, Jackie?
I know.
On August?
That's like a Thursday.
That is also a Thursday. Okay.
Wait a second. Is it August? I think it might be August.
19th is a Tuesday.
19th is Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday in August is the 19th.
Okay, very good. So, again, just to put everybody on notice, the next meeting will be on a Thursday, July 17th. Let's do the roll call, starting with John.
John Givernoli.
John Patrick.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Mioshi.
Sarah Blutze.
Okay. And we have minutes from the meeting of May 20th, 2025. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The first item on the agenda is our adjourned public hearing for the comprehensive master plan. We had a meeting last month, and we also then last evening had a public workshop. We had several members of the community came. They had some excellent questions and comments, and I'd like to read through those for everyone. But first, I'll accept the motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. From the workshop of June 11th, attending on behalf of the Comprehensive Master Plan Committee included myself, Michelle Robbins, Mary Ann Flores, who as everyone knows is one of our town council members, and Emily Gardner of Saratoga Associates, who really advised us all the way through on the plan. Some of the comments included basically concerns about some of the things they saw in the plan, one of which was when the state gets ready to remove the bridge on Route 82, there's apparently an indication that it will be a three-year plan that may end up cutting people off from being able to cross from one side of the town to the other, may be difficult to be able to get to businesses. And so, two of the members actually suggested that the state consider a temporary proof fabricated bridge to mitigate that disruption. In any event, we'll make sure this is part of the things that we recommend, but it's a good point. The other thing they were concerned about is there may be up to five traffic circles going forward. Not that is, not all of that is conceptual at this point, and still going to take a lot of planning and more importantly, funding sources for it. But that too, may cause some disruptions, and they were concerned about that. The proposed roof trail crosses State Route 82 and 376. There were concerns about pedestrian safety on that and other concerns regarding adequate restroom facilities and maintenance of the path, particularly during the winter months for snow removal and that kind of thing. One community member wanted to know if we were going to be making recommendations on wayfinding signage, and the answer to that was yes. That actually was a big item throughout our discussions. And she was particularly interested in making sure that there's sufficient parking for people to park and be able to walk from business to business, which is also part of the conceptual plans we have, and to have proper signage to show people where parking will be located.
John, while you're on that, we may need crosswalks as well, because there aren't very many of those in town. And if you're expecting people to walk, it'd be nice if they could do it, you know, across the road safely.
Exactly. Another question was raised about the installation of sidewalks along Route 82. And while the need for improved walkability was supported, questions were asked about access to mailboxes, conflicts with utility poles, snow clearing by property owners versus the town, questions regarding connection to the community center and that sort of thing. And there were some recommendations made by one member of the community. And lastly, there were some general comments, including support for small businesses and requests for notification and public participation during the zoning review process. All considered, I think everybody was very positive about it. A lot of these things really are more operational kinds of things or planning kinds of things that I'm sure will go into discussions as we move forward, but all very well received. Are there any members of the public here this evening to speak for or against the comprehensive master plan? If not, I'd like to take some comments from members of the board who haven't had an opportunity up to this point. And we'll start with John.
For starters, anyone who hasn't looked at that comprehensive plan, just the historic value alone is worth the read. I gotta give you that. But I understand a comprehensive plan is to maintain development moving forward, right? I also believe that without proper zoning, this turns into a wish list. Implementing these goals becomes very difficult. Housing, green spaces, farmlands, industrial development. Zoning becomes a key to developing any plan moving forward here. There was a statement, I wrote this specifically, there was a statement in the plan that says, "The town offers a blend of rural charm and suburban convenience," which I think is the exact reason why most of us moved here. And I believe with the proper zoning moving forward, it doesn't turn into a wish list. It turns into an actual plan moving forward. So my biggest concern with this moving forward is zoning. Like I said, zoning dictates all. Zoning dictates what plans move forward. Zoning dictates what gets built. So my biggest concern out of this entire plan is the zoning that follows. That's what I have.
Excellent. Thank you, John. Don?
Yeah, I agree. And I think you still want it to be a rural community and not overdevelop this. And then, you know, especially with the roads we have, you know, you're gonna, they're gonna be jammed up with overdevelopment. You can't start asking people to give up their property to increase the width of the roads and make it a four lane when it's a two lane. So, as John said, the zoning is really critical here.
Excellent. Thank you, Don. Rich?
So far, from what I can see through public and professional input, I think that what I see is a plan really coming together. I see it being something that's very attainable. And I feel very comfortable where we are to this point and like to see more public input rather than social media criticism of it. It's very interesting to see some of the dynamic in that. And I always prefer to see people come out and tell us their thoughts and feelings rather than try to, you know, maintain battles online rather than bring them here and let us understand so that we can do our jobs on that level. So.
Excellent point. Thank you, Rich. Ed?
From what I recall, when I read through the plan, it seems like it's more of an aspirational document. There's not a lot of concrete, here's what we want to do. And just as an example, I'll give that we wanted to, you know, it says that we want to promote the arts in town. Well, how are we gonna do it? I can tell you that I'm a member of the guitar club that meets monthly in the library on Sunday afternoons. And during the summer, of course, the library's closed on Sundays, so we didn't have a home for a bit. And we actually approached the recreation department about potentially using the bandstand in the rec. We were told that if we wanted to do that, we need to rent it. So that's, you know, to me, that's not really encouraging the arts. You know, you got a town like Beacon that has, was that First Saturday or whatever, Second Saturday, where they have different events in town. It draws people into town. I'm, you know, envisioning artists can display their work. We can get, you know, there's a couple of dance studios. Maybe they want to have a recital in that space that could be open to the public. You could have open mic type things to get some of the musicians out there. And it would encourage people to gather in a space.
Excellent point. And a lot of that implementation that you're talking about is going to be no doubt assigned to various committees, groups of people by the town board, once they approve the plan and we're then off and running.
Well, that's why it is aspirational.
Right, exactly.
But I would just add to that. If there's something specific that you think might help implement what you, a goal that you see, then you should send us some thoughts on paper, because maybe we can work something into one of the policies and make it a little bit more detailed.
Well, to Ed's point too, that's actually a good point. I think you could also point to like, they built like that East Dale community up there. Now, flat ground, nothing there, much easier lifting, so to speak, to get it to where it is. But it's built around all those things together with business and really like a, kind of like a real downtown feel. So sometimes we could just look to maybe attempt to mimic a little bit of it, take like finer points that would fit our community to try to, you know, assimilate them into the plan and see how it goes from there. Good point, Ed.
Great, thank you. Sarah?
So, I think my sort of big takeaway from it is that we have a big town, but everybody's craving community. We're looking for our own outlets for a sense of community. To your point, through arts and culture, maybe some nightlife, maybe sports, whatever it might be. And maybe instead of fighting the social media aspect of it, that's the way that we reach the people, because that's where they are, unfortunately or fortunately. That's sort of the, that's where they're willing to participate. And so, maybe through this implementation process, there's a way, I know it's challenging, but a way to open up the forum to people online who are willing to participate from behind their screens but are unwilling or unable to come here. So I hope that there's a way that we can reach the people who are looking for the things, right? Like it's multi-generational living, it's a downtown, it's a vibrant community that serves different people in different ways and where they are. To, I think, Rich's point, we don't have the direct ability to build the things that we want. We can't update storefronts ourselves, we can't construct a neighborhood. But what we can do, and what I hope this plan will allow us to do, is to legislate for it, plan for it, and to create the conditions that make it possible. So I personally am really looking forward to the next process of, you know, taking this framework and seeing the implementation through.
Now, that's also a good point. And I don't know how this connects, but my family was involved with a pretty substantial project down in Westchester in Osning. And the main street in Osning, you know, we're going back to the 70s now and then towards the 80s, was very downtrodden, struggling. Urban renewal had come through Osning, like a lot of these towns ripped things down to the ground with the promise of building back, never happened. So probably in the late 70s, there was community development grants made available to businesses that were on Main Street and storefronts there so that they could make improvements to their places at their own expense. But obviously, they were, you know, grants that were provided to some degree in low interest, whatever they may have been. And I know that the state today is really aggressively pursuing that and some of the mixed use of what we're looking to do in the plan. So maybe there's connectivity in what Sarah said to kind of bring that to the table to these businesses or people that may have a desire or want to improve upon their storefronts or their businesses. And we're able maybe to potentially at least connect some dots for them to help them get part of this plan and kind of get on board with traction for it. So maybe another happen.
Great. Thank you, Rich. Any comments by any of our professionals at this point? Fire Advisory Board?
Yeah, I was actually lucky enough to meet with the team that put the plan together early in the process and present to them some of the challenges that we as a fire district face as the town grows. First and foremost, it's just call volume. And trying to plan in a way that makes it able for us to maintain the volunteer fire department and rescue squad that we have. You know, two days ago, for instance, we answered 23 calls in 24 hours.
Wow.
It was a busy day, entirely volunteer. As the town grows, that becomes more the norm than the exception. And it puts a lot of pressure on. If we have the members to do it, it's not a problem. But that's, therein lies the rub, right? And so, you know, we, again, on social media, we'll see people say, "Well, maybe it's just time to go with a paid department," not realizing the expense that goes along with that, that their taxes would go up exponentially on the fireside anyway. So as we look to the kinds of businesses and entities that we're going to try to attract to the town, that's something to keep in mind as well. There are some things that just become too big for us to handle, that they just put such pressure on us that it becomes very difficult to maintain what we have. And what we have is a great benefit to the town. And then from a personal side, as a business owner, I thought it was interesting what Mr. Campbell said about helping out businesses that are in town. There's a great effort that's made to try to attract businesses to town. But what do we do for the businesses who are in town, who've already chosen this town on their own? You know, we chose to start a business here because we live here. And so, you know, it's our community and we chose to add to it in that way. And it was very difficult in a lot of ways. You know, we faced a lot of challenges to do that while we watch other larger businesses kind of get ushered in with all kinds of help and assistance and guidance. So I'd like to see the kind of help that we provide to recruit businesses offered to keep businesses, to maintain the small businesses that are in town. Just recently, we lost, you know, a beloved restaurant right up the road, you know. And so, you know, what sorts of things can we do to maintain the businesses that we have first and foremost before going out there to try to find new ones?
Got it. Great points. Thank you. So, since there are no members of the public to speak this evening, we will close the public hearing. But I want to emphasize that we will receive written comments for the next 30 days. So if anybody, members of the public or any of us have any further comments or questions, we can send those in via email to the Planning Department. In addition, Michelle, you've offered to meet with anybody that would like to meet about a question or concern. And all one has to do is actually call the Planning Department and try to set up a meeting with Michelle to do that. And we still have, probably still have a couple of months where they could accomplish that. But I'd suggest doing it sooner rather than later if there's any ongoing things. So if there's no other comments or anything, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item on the agenda is Valley Christian Church.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Alex Lamo, I work for Wale and Architects, Architecture. We were in front of you in April with just kind of a schematic idea. To summarize the comments, we did not dig anymore. We were told, you know, get a full engineering plan together. We didn't, it was suggested we do a drilling program. We, for, we didn't do that. We just went straight to the engineering because we, you know, figured that's the most critical information and we can figure out how to deal with the rock later. So we hired Matt Towne from Willingham Engineers, and we revised our plan a little bit. We figured out the grading necessary for a lot, the number of spaces. We refined down to 24. So it's a 24-spot lot. We still have the stairs going up. We just received some comments from the Fire Advisory Board there about some signage for no parking. And, you know, we should have enough clear space at the entry ramp here. The general design kind of remains similar, just fine tuning the radius on the ramp, the slopes and the grade. So this is our architectural plan and our civil plans. I'll let Matt take over. Is there any questions from the board to start, or how do we?
So I think without the geotechnical investigation that was recommended by the town engineer, you may be faced with restoration in the event that you can't do what the plan is at this point. Is that correct?
Yeah, if there's a risk of like, we get up there and we absolutely can't blast or hammer, I think we'd be willing to, you know, if the church wants to pay the expense of a geotechnical program or scrap the parking lot at that point, that's up to their discretion. I think we talked about conservatory, some kind of covenant last time or something.
Maybe a bond for restoration.
Bond for restoration.
But if they don't come through, they gotta restore.
Yes.
Right. So that's essentially the route that you are looking to go down?
Uh, yes.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, I don't, if that's going to be required, let it, let us know. You know, I would like to have the permission to work up there or have the church have permission to work up there. And then if we come to the point where we know we can't do anything, I think we'd definitely be restoring anything we can.
Okay. So I think there's still some process that we have to go through. We'll want to kind of complete some discussion tonight and hear from your associate.
Sure.
But we will have to have a public hearing so that members of the public will have an opportunity to come and speak about the project since it's a pretty significant change. And during this next month or so, I think you can expect that without knowing for sure what you're able to do, that we will require restoration back to.
Well, we know for sure what we're gonna do. We have engineered plans, lighting.
I mean, just in, but in the event that you run into the kind of rock that doesn't permit you to complete the plan, then you, I think the agreement or the indication by your side was that you would restore the site to its original condition.
Yes.
And then we'd need a bond to be able to ensure that that happens.
Yeah, I didn't understand it as that was conditional based on if we didn't do the geotechnical probing. I mean, it's still the same situation. We could have done the probing and, you know, tried the dig and we couldn't, right? I mean, I don't know if that's a definite answer either. It's still.
Well, I thought the probing was supposed to tell you exactly what's there. So then you'd know if you could do it before you started.
Hi, Dan Gilman, the operations pastor there. We did reach out to three different technical firms, the geotech firms. So it wasn't like we, you had asked us, "Did you even investigate it?" So we did go back and investigate it. At the high end, it was $20,000 to get a machine up there and drill down into the rock. I sent them information and pictures, and they all said that you should have no problem removing that rock. There's multiple ways. The rock looks soft. You've experienced removing part of it in your last site provision or revision. And so, they all agreed, as well as the excavator, saying that there shouldn't be any problem executing this plan. So I just want you to know, we did, you know, we didn't ignore your advice. We did reach out, and it was very costly. And, you know, we figured instead of spending $20,000 for the guy to say, "Yeah, you can hammer the rock," we'll just spend $15,000 or $20,000 hammering the rock.
Got it. So I just wanted to make it clear that there is some risk, and you're aware of the risk. There's every possibility that it might not be what everybody thinks. And so we'll incorporate that into the decision. Hopefully, everything will work out just perfectly for you.
Yeah.
But again, the risk being that if you don't get the parking lot completed, that you have posted a bond so that that would ensure the restoration of the property back to its original condition. That's, I think.
So, yeah, by original condition.
Well, you have a stop work order on the site, right?
Right.
So you went beyond the scope of what you should have done, so they put a stop work order. So what we're saying is that if you were to then go down the road, like you're getting a permit to do this, and it doesn't work out the way you expected to, as you've been advised by these other professionals or the professionals that are with you tonight, that you would be posting a bond to restore it back to when you started the work that was not permitted.
So, just so I enter, so like planting trees, getting grass, controlling the, that makes sense.
Bringing it back to its original.
Yeah, we wouldn't just leave it.
We know you can't facilitate it to be exactly the same.
Right.
But it would have to be restored back to the type of space it was prior to its, the work being done.
Yeah, I would, I agree with that. I don't have a problem with that. I guess I would reserve the right to make it a green space for the church to use, if possible. We would certainly bring that back to you.
Yes.
For review. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Why don't we hear from your associate?
Yeah, I would just echo that in the previous parking lot project, there was a lot of hammering that was required. And the rock broke up really easy, talking with the excavator. And we did dig a little bit up there to inspect it, and it was the same. So that's what's anticipated, but unknown at this point. Obviously, it's underground. But yeah, it's a 24-car parking lot. We're removing two spaces. We're gonna put signs for no parking.
Looked like one and a half spaces, but that.
It's, I mean, there are two.
Your spaces are 10 feet wide?
The existing ones? I think they were.
I was going by the drawing that was submitted to planning.
Yeah.
When I measured, it was like 15 feet instead of 20. But even that.
Okay.
That'll work for us. The only thing that we ask for is no parking signs, because you're gonna have a space there. And if it looks like a duck and cracks like a duck, it's probably a parking space. So.
Fair enough. Yeah, there was one here and then one over here. So two separate spots, I think.
Now, we wanted these two.
So this is only counted as one. There's just a little extra space there.
And I think, just to piggyback on that discussion, where you've got the space kind of marked off so that where the pedestrian walk comes in off of the hillside, I think you're gonna need to, I don't know where folks are gonna go once they get there. There has to be safe pedestrian access to the building. So I don't know if you're gonna have to.
Stripe it?
Stripe another space or just figure out a way of getting people safely across that parking lot, because you're kind of dropping them onto the parking lot, so you might lose another space there.
Okay, thank you.
Just look at that.
Okay, questions, other questions or comments from board members? Anything?
I have more.
And?
So, the fence, and there's a fence proposed along the property line. And I don't, and then you have like 22 white spruce trees and about five heritage river birch. The spacing is pretty tight. I think it's like, what, 10 feet behind the line? So, and I don't know, I wasn't up there, so I'm not sure exactly what the topography is like at that point. But I just, you know, you need some space to plant these trees. So we just need to make sure that the plantings soften the site so that the residential property next door is not looking at the lights from your parking lot. That's one thing I'm concerned about, because right now, I think the poles are about 15 feet tall. And I know that you used full cutoff fixtures. Thank you. But I just make sure that there's no light spill over behind the site. So if you have to shield those fixtures, sometimes they have devices that you can put on so that the light really kind of stops right at the fixture line and doesn't go beyond, because you're gonna be above his property. And he was seeing just woods before. And in fairness, this was supposed to be a non-disturbance area. So we have to do everything we possibly can to make sure that they're not disturbed by light poles in their backyard. And because it's taller, it's gonna be a little bit of a challenge. So maybe even consider different lighting fixtures than what you've got, maybe lower ones, maybe bollard types or something. See if you can soften that lighting as much as possible, because it is high above his property.
Is there a fence proposed?
Yes, there's a fence proposed.
And can we talk, can we talk a little bit, do we have the details of that fence in terms of material, color, height?
Yeah, it's on sheet CP3.
Okay, I don't have a copy of the plan.
So it's a stocky fence, six. So it's a stockade fence, six feet tall, wood slats, vertical.
Okay.
So, you know, you have to decide, I mean, the stockade fence versus a vinyl fence, that might be less, you know, maintenance required?
Mm-hmm.
And then, just to make sure that the lighting levels right now are kinda low near the stairway, they may be okay, because I don't know if it takes into consideration all of the lighting that might be on the church itself, the building itself, but just make sure that, we'll just have to make sure that their safety is maintained, because they're right where you come down off that staircase and then into the parking lot, just, it's, it's low. Also, there's six required ADA spaces and one van space for the number of parking spaces you have on the site, I think you do have six, but two of them are located near that secondary building, so I think you, you might need to put all of the ADA spaces near where the actual main church is, not next, two of them are next to the, I guess they use that as offices or something else, so I think, I think those, there should be two more spaces near the church, and then I don't know if you've shown a van space or not, but that's a requirement.
But we're not changing that parking lot, though, right?
If you have the number of parking spaces that you have, you have to have six ADA and one van spaces required, and I, and you should have the ADA spaces near the, all of them should be near the church.
That makes sense, they're, I mean, they're all van-accessible.
They are, okay. And then, yeah, then we would add, I would advise you to add the restoration bond as a condition of the site plan approval.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see, I think... I think that's it, so, and I guess the final parking space number we'll figure out once you guys take a look at the pedestrian issues, and there might be, you know, you might lose another space here or there.
One thing that I would like to add, is there's two drywells proposed at the entrance to this upper parking lot, and you will need to do some excavating there to determine whether or not those drywells are really feasible or not, so I think the board should grant permission for that exercise to determine that that's gonna work.
Yeah, is that something we can investigate?
Absolutely, so I'll accept a motion to, to approve the excavation that was just described by...
That's pretty finite, you know, it's two limited areas, so...
Right.
And then we would, we would wanna witness that as well.
Okay, okay, so you'll notify the town engineer before you do it, so he can go out himself or send somebody, so, I heard Ed, you made the motion?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, other questions or comments? Do we have enough in the plan to be able to establish a public hearing at this point? These all sound like fairly easy matters to clean up and take care of, so, will you, okay, our next meeting is July 17th, that gives sufficient time, is that a meeting at which you could attend and have, and I'd suggest bringing a big set of plans so that the, anybody in the public would be able to actually view those a little bit easier, but if that works for you?
Yeah, I think that can work for us, yeah, we have full plans, we'll bring an easel or something.
Yeah, perfect, so, I'll accept a motion to establish a public hearing for Valley Christian Church for the July 17th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So it would be public hearing, and then does the board look at it then, or the next one?
Yeah, so, so we'll have a public hearing, I think what you wanna do, first of all, is check with Jackie, so you'll have to send out mailings, okay, and all that kind of thing, and I guess there's a question, we'll, we'll probably, you'll also wanna spend some time maybe visiting with, with Scott and/or Michelle, and so that we can determine whether we're gonna be ready for a resolution at that time or not, my guess is we will be.
I think it depends on the public comment that may or may not be received, and how quickly you can turn around the plans and address the comments that you've heard from the board tonight.
Well, and also to check and see if the drywall perks the right way.
Yeah.
And in terms of the conservation bond, is that something that, that gets written up?
Or restoration bond, you would, you'd go...
You'd go to a bonding company for that.
Okay, because it's...
Or it could be a cash bond check.
We could do, we could hold escrow, I guess.
We could hold an escrow too, if that's something you're interested in.
Okay, it's literally just the bond, though, it's, okay.
Yeah, go to your, the person that does your property insurance there, and they should be able to give you an idea or direct you to somebody for it.
Thank you.
And then how would they determine what the bond should be?
We'll work that out.
We have to look at that.
Okay, so you'd have to understand with them how much it is, and then obviously go to your insurance company and then...
I think for those smaller amounts, typically people post cash bonds.
Yeah, it could be.
Got it, but I think we'd recommend, jump right on this right away and try to wrap as much of this up as possible quickly, so that it's not going to the last minute.
Right, I mean, the bond, that wouldn't come until after it's approved.
After it's approved, yes.
But just to kinda give you a condition...
It'll be a condition.
I would say 20,000 as an order of magnitude.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is ridges at Stormville Mountain subdivision.
Good evening. My name is Amy, I'm the project planner with the LRC Group, and we're here on behalf of the applicant, Roya Development LLC, representing their proposed project, ridges at Stormville Mountain Road. The project is located at 20 Stormville Mountain Road, and it's in the R2 zoning district, and the parcel is approximately 41 acres. The proposed project is an 11-lot subdivision for single-family residential lots, the lot sizes are ranging from just over two acres to just about 14 and a half acres. The proposed dwellings will be served with individual septic and wells. The driveways proposed, lots 1 through 10, will have proposed driveways off of Stormville Mountain Road, whereas for lot 11, it would be a shared driveway off of the cul-de-sac from Vanbrook Drive. So we're here tonight to discuss any initial comments from the board, but before that, I'll have Brittany just discuss a little bit about the engineering.
My name is Brittany Shakely with LRC Group, so we've gone out and done preliminary testing for all the septic systems, and we've generally found sand and gravel, which is great, we did find some groundwater at about seven feet, so we'll just have to maneuver around that. Our limit of work is approximately 4.8 acres, so we're under the five-acre threshold for a stormwater pollution prevention plan, if it does come to it where we're exceeding that, then we would end up doing some rain gardens or something for each of the houses, but right now, we're under that, so we're not required to. Each of the driveways that we're proposing, there are a maximum of 10% slope coming down if, I think there's only two driveways that are at that slope, however, we're gonna come in at 20, or 20 feet for only 4%, so we're meeting the requirements...
It's 30 feet, not 20 feet.
Sorry, yes, 30 feet.
30 feet, yes.
To meet the requirements for the driver requirements, but other than that, for the SWIP that we are required to do, since we are under that threshold, we'll just do an erosion control, so we'll put up some silt fence, establish a construction entrance and all of that.
Okay, questions or comments from board members? I guess one thing is, unfortunately, these came in a little late, have you seen yet the letters from our HVEA engineer and RENA engineering?
Yes, we received both earlier today, and we'll work on reviewing and addressing those comments for our next mission.
Got it.
Just off the top of my head, going up Stormville Mountain Road, there's, I know that there's a creek that runs real close to 52, I'm not sure where that is on your map, and I also know that there are some steep slopes in that area as well, okay.
As blue as that is there.
Okay.
So we have, we have engaged a wetland biologist, and we're working with him and the DEC, he has done a delineation, and we've started the jurisdictional determination process, we're just, we're still working through it.
Okay.
How do you access the lot that is the bigger lot?
The big lot?
So, the big lot comes in, and it's from the cul-de-sac on Vanbrook Drive, so it's gonna be a shared driveway, and it goes right from the cul-de-sac right here.
So, just, so you understand, the adjacent lot actually is encroached on their drive, on that parcel, on lot 11, their driveway goes through lot 11 and then connects into their home, so, and I think there might also be some other encroachments from that, so I'm assuming you guys are working with the, with the neighbor, so the, they would need a shared driveway, special permit, and then maybe an easement for, from, from you guys in order to maintain access to their parcel. There is also a secondary access to a garage that's next door, but I really think that they're gonna have to maintain that driveway to get to their house, because I think it looks like their garage is, comes from that way. And then also, so I have a couple of questions, the fir, I'll, I'll continue with lot 11, because I have a few things on lot 11, so we need the shared driveway special permit, which you will also need to advertise for, just remember that when you're doing your advertising for the public hearing, and then, because we've been dealing with some issues with what is a front yard, side yard, especially on lots that have multiple frontages, I would just ask that the planning board consider designating what the front yard is, so that there's no issues in, in the future, we'll, you know, take a look at the plan, decide. I think it should be facing Vanbrook Drive, but you should weigh in on that.
But would it be addressed there, like if that was the case, that would have a Vanwick Drive address?
It would have the Vanbrook Drive address, yeah, yeah.
And that's just that one bottom parcel is, is one big lot?
One big lot.
All the way across down to the bottom?
Yeah.
Yeah, the white lined, wow, okay.
That's the 14 acre.
Yes, okay.
And it just said, what has happened, sometimes is, they'll come in afterwards with their plot plans, and they'll change the direction of the house, and then it faces a different direction, and so we, we just like to clarify and have it be the planning board that determines that at the time of subdivision, so that we don't have any issues later in, in the future.
Got it.
It helps us, and then, the lot number one, there's a little bit of an issue because the lot one driveway does not comply with our section A19776 driveways, which I think you'll see also in the, so just, I don't know if you can redesign anything, just to make it work.
Can you come directly off 52 with lot one?
We'll, we'll have to take a look and see what our options are.
Okay.
But whatever holds our rest to the...
Yeah, and just so, for clarification to the board, the Stormville Mountain Road and 52 are pretty close at the, you know, the, the driveway is at pretty close to the intersection, so our code requires you to be a certain distance off the intersection, currently, right now, it is not, so they can probably figure out another way of bringing in, but they, they've gotta look at that again, because it's, right now, it doesn't meet code. And then, let's see, we, there's a culvert at the bottom that crosses Stormville Mountain Road, and we just need to make sure during your stormwater that the, that culvert can handle the stormwater from the project, so just around that, okay? And I think that's it from me right now.
Okay, so, any other questions or comments? No? Then we will look forward to seeing you again when you're able to address all of the comments from tonight, as well as the letters, and go from there.
I just wanna, there's one other thing I wanted to say, that most of the driveways off of 52 are like 50 feet back exactly, so they're super, so the houses are pretty close to 52, or as close as they can make them to 52, so I know that there's, they're under the five-acre limited disturbance, but if anything gets pushed back with the driveways, then they would be, there would be more disturbance, so I think we just need to be, you know, cognizant of that, because ultimately during the plot plan, they could come in with, folks might wanna take advantage of the building envelope and move the houses back a little further, so I just, that's just to be something to be aware of.
Yeah, but they'll be married to the filed map at that point, there's gonna be restrictions, so...
But I just, we need to think about that, just to make sure that we're not putting them in a position where people are gonna be asking to move their driveway back, or their house back a little further, yeah, so we might wanna consider that as part of the subdivision layout.
And that's because they have such big backyards compared, okay.
And it may be that they want it that way, I'm just, it's just a site layout thing to consider as we're going through the process.
Is there a reason that it was laid out that way? Just to shorten the driveways, or...
It was to shorten the drives, and also, just a matter of the slopes coming in, so we wanted to be able to meet, not necessarily come down at so far down that you're sitting 15 feet above the, or below the road, but we just kind of add a happy medium to the road, if that makes sense.
Are all of the driveways on Stormville Mountain Road?
All of them.
Except for lot 11, that's the only one that's off of that cul-de-sac.
And possibly one, depending on what they do with one.
Right.
So I guess just my question to the board is, in terms of next steps, aside from addressing comments, do we start a circulation through lead agency?
Yeah.
Yes, so we do, good point, thank you, and so I'll accept a motion to declare intent to be lead agency.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have that out of the way, and I think at a subsequent meeting, we'll be able to establish a, a public hearing, and go through the process with you.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Shady Creek Road subdivision.
This is Brian, Brian Stokosa, Dan Stokosa Engineering, this is a, an existing five-plus-acre parcel along Hillside Lake Road, this project was, or this piece of property was in front of the board, gotta be 25 years ago, we were playing around with a possible firehouse at this, at this parcel, since that time, it's been put up for sale, and the current applicant is looking for input from the board, we're proposing a three-lot subdivision, conventional subdivision, so we'll have two lots that are your standard lots, we'll have a third lot, that'll be a flag lot, the parcel's relatively flat, there's a wet area in the back, we've engaged a wetland biologist for flagging and obviously locating those flags, but, you know, we're in our one-acre zone, so we have well and septics, there's sand and gravel on site, we've done preliminary analysis and talks with Dutchess County Department of Public Works, it's on a county road, so before submitting to the board, we obviously had a discussion with them regarding access along the county road, they had no issue with, with the access points, the only thing that they were concerned with is just making sure that water is shut away from the county road and it's directed inward, so there's no ponding. I did pick up the, the comments from the town engineer that we received, we'll make sure that our driveway offsets work from Jennifer Drive, but, I don't know, other than that, this, this project will, it'll require a basic SWIP, we're under, again, that five-acre requirement, so it'll be erosion settlement control plan, and we're just here to start the process with the board, and continue to work with our biologist and give you some updated information as it relates to flagging and working with our, our agencies.
Great, okay, questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from our professionals?
Yeah, I, I just had a few, I, I know that you received the comments about the driveway offset, so I was just, I just had a question, so the county is not going to make you come out and go right across from the driveway, it's gonna let you offset a little bit, okay?
What is that offset?
It's, because it's both, both driveways are kind of offset, right, from the two roads across, and it's, it's, I know the parcel angles that way, so I know...
And it's, I know the parcel angles that way, so I know that's the, that's the trick, but it's, but you have site distance and everything?
Yeah, we had, yeah, site distance. We had met with the permit engineer on site and we had that discussion before we submitted to the town to make sure we had that assurance.
Okay.
Could you flip that flag if you had to for the offset distance?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering too.
I think that's what we're going to be doing.
Yeah, okay. Did you have a delineation done or is the wetland mapping off of the current maps on the thing?
So the wetland delineation that you see was done by Mike Nowicki back when we were playing around with the firehouse layout. So we did hold that. I did go back there. It's based upon groundwater out there, it's sand and gravel. The flag locations that were depicted on this plan generally match what we saw out on site, but we did reengage Mr. Nowicki to confirm that. And he should be on site hopefully this week.
Okay, so is it, is it largely just the pond edge and then it doesn't go into the forest area at all? It's pretty much ends at the, at the bank?
Yeah, and it's pretty defined because it slopes up pretty good.
Okay. And the, on the flag lot, now if you flip it, this might change, I understand, but right now, the house is kind of showing it's angled, which also sometimes gives us a little bit of trouble. So I was wondering if the house is angled for a particular reason and maybe if you flip it, it won't end up being angled?
Yeah, no specific reason why we did that. I think just to give it a little bit of character, but I can flip it and make it so we don't have a-
Okay, so that's another thing.
Parallel with the building setback or-
Yeah.
Parallel with the property lines, is that the idea currently?
Yeah. So just one of the things that we're seeing, you know, with variances and all sorts of things is these issues. So I'm trying to get the planning board maybe more engaged in how the houses are sort of laid out in some instances, especially on corner lots and flat lots. So just something to be aware of as we're going through the subdivision process. And then is there any proposed landscaping along the frontage? I think we need to put a little landscaping along the frontage of the parcels.
We didn't propose anything in this initial submission, but we'll work with you to-
Perfect.
-meet that intent.
Those are my comments.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay. Very good.
We'll take it from there.
Thank you very much.
Do we want to declare?
Declare intent. So I'll accept a motion to declare intent to be lead agency on this project?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And if there's no further business to come before the planning board, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.